Welcome everyone to the regular session of Goldendale City Council for January 21st, 2020. Appreciate everyone being here and having a good turnout. We have three city council members missing. Justin has some medical training he's going through. Andy was in a car accident and is recovering from bruises, really painful bruises. Lauren is in Olympia for a segregation meeting. We need a motion to excuse these members from attending tonight. We have a quorum.
We'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse the four councilmen, three councilmen that are not in attendance. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a public hearing, but we do need an agenda, a motion for the agenda and the consent agenda.
So move with the removal of the presentation.
Very good.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting and the consent agenda and remove the noted presentation by Mr. Scott Lewis. Is there any question or comments or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't have department reports tonight. Both our fire chief and our police chief are recovering from activities over the weekend, and they were all official activities. So we've excused them. We'll go to council business, and we'll hear an awful lot from Larry tonight. We'll begin with item one, discussion of the Econe Park kitchen building demolition. Larry?
Okay, so the discussion about the Econe Park kitchen building demolition has been going on for almost a year. In fact, first time it was brought up was at a recommendation made by our former Public Works Director that, in his opinion, the kitchen at Econe Park is in need of demolition. This follows, I don't know if you remember because it's now not there anymore, but the old bathroom facility was a similarly constructed fort-like structure, and it was demolished in about two or three years ago because it was just leaning so bad you could almost push it, and you could see it rocking. Especially when you got up on the second floor, that was not too much fun. So that, that building was demolished, and this building was built with similar materials, and we're starting to get a lot of rot and things like that, and concern about the construction of the, of the building. So on February 4th, first meeting in February, the Carl Inyer, former Public Works Director, felt like the kitchen building at Econe Park should be demolished. He mentioned things like a screwdriver can easily be buried into the structural member of the building, the roof covering is also unsafe, roofing, roofing materials coming off and collapsing of the roof might be one storm away. He recommended that the entire structure be removed. And that, he also mentioned that rehabilitation of the construct, of the structure would cost more than, than building a new one. However, building a new one doesn't have the current budget enough to, to do that. So we'll, we'll talk some more about that, I suspect. So then that happened at the February 2nd, or the second meeting in February, on the 4th, 4th of February, and then the second, second meeting in February on the 19th, we had a report from a structural engineer regarding the structural inspection and evaluation of that building. Basically, he said, it was his opinion that the covering canopy, which was the piece that kind of was a lean-to-like thing, the way it was constructed, it needed to come down right away. We in fact have taken that down and, and took it away right away. The rest of the building, he was basically saying that the overall building is in rough shape. If you did some structural upgrades, it might last a few more years, but the recommendations, if left unchanged, the building may fall sooner than later. So basically, he's saying that it needs to come down right away because I'm not sure how long it can last. And the cost of repairing is not worth it because you might as well tear it down and build something new. So it was at that time that the council also met and said, at the request of the farmer's market, they said that, the council said, let's delay the demolition of the kitchen at Econe Park until September. That was September of 2019. And then we went to, then in October of that same year, we decided that we were concerned about the structure of the building and asked for a legal opinion on, on whether or not that building should be torn down. And it's there, it's the opinion of our attorney that it should be torn down unless there's some major structural component, structural fixes and renovations to the building. There's a lot of things wrong structurally, and again, we just don't see how structurally you can fix it, you might as well tear it down and start over. So that is still our recommendation, going back to February of last year, our recommendation is to still tear it down. Now, there were some discussions at some of those meetings, could we put something in its place? We have to be careful about floodplain issues, so if we moved it to a different, lower elevation part of the property, we have to deal with floodplain issues, and that gets a little dicey. We could look at some other options, but again, it has budget considerations, and right now, we don't have money to, to replace it with anything. So it would be our recommendation that we take at least this first step and get the building demolished, but we also wanted to give people an opportunity to have some discussion about that. And Mayor, if you'd like to invite those that would like to speak on this matter, they could come up to the podium and state their name and address and what their concerns are.
We'll do this pretty much as we do a public hearing. If you come up and sit at the lectern and give your name and address, and state what your feelings are on this, and maybe your connection to the Saturday market for most people as well, but we'll do that now. Thank you, sir.
My name's Tobias Israel. I'm the, I'm on board, I'm the president and board of the Farmer's Market Association, and I was asked to come today and talk about it. The hope that we can keep the building, it sounds like from what you said, everybody's been saying, just take it down, but then, of course, that leaves us without what would be useful for us, has been very useful for us over the years. It's at least a storage facility is probably the main use of that building for us right now, other than the kitchen allowed people who were doing prepared food to be able to serve food, have refrigeration, clean up after it, so it made it much easier for people that want to serve food at the market to do that. But the storage facility is a big section, the back section of the kitchen is actually a storeroom, and it's where we kept our canopies and our tables and chairs and banners and brochures and miscellaneous equipment so that we could do the market there. Having to move it every day, every week to some other location with the bag, it'd be a great inconvenience for us at this point. And I still don't understand the structural aspect of it, but apparently your engineers must have got in there, and I noticed that the boards on the outside, the, which are just siding, are rotted out because of the, you know, the rain land on it and splash. But I didn't notice anything structural in the walls particularly, which, which holds up the roof. I didn't see any area there that had any rot or any, you know. But, and then again, the roof seems as though it's pretty sound right now, but I guess I can't go against what the engineers are saying, so I'll just leave it at that. We have need for it. We have no way of, we would need something to replace it if we were to continue to do the market there. I would say, one suggestion is, if the building was removed, you would have a pad there that's not in the floodplain, as far as I know.
That's true.
So to me, another structure could be built there, at least for storage, say, or something like that, you know, something low budget.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. That's helpful. Dana?
Nope, I'm just getting out of the way.
Can't hardly get out of my own way. Dana Peck with the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce. We'd be happy to host the farmer's market back at the Chamber site, if this is a way of having at least an interim solution. We've got lots more storage than we used to have when they were there originally, and, you know, my predecessor was certainly the, you know, one of the real mains people getting the things started in the first place. It'd be fun to have him back.
Sure.
We've got all kinds of storage, we've got outside water and power that could be used to accommodate all of it. If it turned out that we don't have enough space, I'd be happy to talk to the neighbors. I sure can't speak for them, but I'd be happy to, you are in good terms with our neighbors down there, and I think, I'd like to think we could find a way to, to make that work if we needed more space. And I think, you know, the other question I think that is, and I wasn't around for any of this, but it's my understanding that there was a time when the Washita folks were concerned about where people parked and when they were crossing, you know, their highway versus our Broadway. And I, I just feel with the current person they've got here in Washita, we could find a way to work all that out too, and maybe, maybe have parking next door on our side of the street. But I think there's an interim fix here, and we'd sure be happy to be part of it, just like where Chamber was happy to be part of, started up in the first place, if that worked for everybody. First of all, I'd charge the living house a lot. It's, it's the, the, the city owns the lot that we're on anyway, so.
Seems a very positive.
Yeah, I think, I think it could be a good thing, and I think there'd probably be a lot more traffic just because it's so much easier to find.
Right, right. I don't have to find a park.
Yeah, just Tobias and I had a chance to talk briefly, so I haven't really talked it through. I talked to Greg a little earlier today. So, you know, if I could answer any questions about that, I'd be happy to.
Well, I just have a question for Tobias. I had a couple of store, store owners wondering how come you guys don't still have it downtown?
Well, downtown, there's a number of reasons. For one, we use canopies generally to keep the sun off our heads, you know, that's probably the biggest reason for. And there's no way to secure a canopy on sidewalks, or it's also hot, you know, hotter than it would be, say, out on green grass. Econe, they had a really nice spot for us. In terms of spending your day on a summer's day, it's a beautiful spot to be. We've really enjoyed our time there. But, yeah. And parking would be an issue too, of course, downtown, not only for the vendors and customers only.
Well, back on economic part, do you use, do you have refrigerator in, in the present building?
Yes.
Do you use it that much?
I, the people who have used it, I know Paulette, when she was there, used it when she set up there. Willie, he's been our vendor last year, Willie Pride, he mostly vans hot dogs and he didn't, he just had coolers for his stuff.
Okay.
But he did use the kitchen for cleaning up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it had hot water and.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ken McCune, 519 East Providence Street. The little building, okay, tear it down, but don't do it unless you have plans to replace it. It's, that place has been used for family reunions, class reunions for years. It shouldn't just be left open without a plan. You know, you could probably get the foyer or the FFA to build it for you in the weekend, frame it and cover it. It's, it's just a little building, it's not like a four-story motel. So don't eliminate the use of that area like that by eliminate it just because you're eliminating that building. Have a plan to replace it with something, or don't tear it down. I've seen you guys spend $10,000 on a study to create a, a community center, and we sat around in here for months listening to some high-paid consultant, and what did we get out of that $10,000? Nothing. We got, we, we were told what we knew before we even hired them. So have a plan. I want to hear a plan. I don't want to just be cut off. It's a, it's a community service to have that there. Thank you.
Anyone else for comments or questions? Anything further, Larry? On that point?
No, I just want to know if the council is willing to go with my recommendation, or if they want to put it up for a while and look at a plan.
Plan for the replacement?
Yeah.
Right, I think that's a good approach.
Well, liability, liability-wise, we know it has to come down.
Right.
As far as replacing the building, we're going to have to come up with something that's to, to replace that structure. Replacing something on that, we could do. I don't know how soon or how quick we could do it. But we have discussed already for long-term, what you were talking about, Ken. We discussed this with Carl, and we had mentioned on building, it's still structure, but it has, it's large, it's large enough that it literally has to go into the floodplain. So there's, it has to be an open structure if it goes into the floodplain. In order for us to do that, we also have to have the money to do that. So that's not something that, it's gonna, that's not gonna happen tonight. But we can work on a plan to possibly get something in that place where they opened. Well, we have, we have some time, because we can't get in there right away and do it anyway. It's too wet and muddy, so. So it's probably gonna be spring anyway, right? Before.
So I understand that, that I've heard also outside, outside of council, that the, that facility obviously has a lot of sentimental value, so we can't compete with that. However, we've already extended the demolition of the building, and every time we extend that, we are putting people's life at risk over sentimental value. So I think, I would agree that it needs to come down, especially because there's not going to be any defending the city against what the engineers have already stated, or sentimental value. What I'd like to see is the partnership with, you know, community, community organizations, when, where we don't have the funding, maybe we can get a partnership between, you know, other organizations, maybe we can get donations from the different companies around to build a different facility, and maybe an open facility, that would be more open. Another thing we can look at is if the storage facility is one of the most important things, different storage facilities there. However, we would have to open that also to the sports events that are being held there, the, the Little League Soccer, the Little League softball, so that they can store their equipment there, and it's fair for the entire community. But that can be done by maybe putting some storage boxes, you know, within the park area or by the baseball fields. You know, storage is simple nowadays, I just, I'm sure we have some legalities there as to permitting that, but the thing is that if we allow one organization to store there, it has to be equal for everybody. But as far as building another facility where people can gather, I, you know, I've, I've come from an, an area that is very hot, so shades are always important, and that's what I'm used to seeing at the park, is open facilities with shading, you know, metal structures and things like that. So people can still come gather, people can still have the reunions there, we can still have that, but maybe a partnership with other organizations to build that would help the city and then come up with a faster solution than we would alone.
Could we come up with a potential cost of what it was?
Sure.
What Carl was talking about?
Sure.
And who would, who would do that?
He had this, like 20,000.
Is there cost in there?
No, that's what he had when we were talking.
Yeah, right, but if we could.
It's about, that facility is the, that you're looking at there is, does it say how big it is? It's, uh.
That's bigger than the pad.
But this was, this was designed to go not on that pad.
Correct.
This was designed. There's really, there's really two options that we need to consider, I think, so far that we've heard. The two alternatives, one would be to build that kind of structure, that's a 40 by 24, which would have picnic tables underneath it, which would have a food preparation area at one end probably, and it would be, and open structure, so it'd be just a, pretty much a cover. But that could be your shade that you've been talking about. The other option is to, to tear it down, but leave the concrete in it, in the place where it is now, and build around that a cover of some kind, some simple open cover that would have at least a kitchen sink, maybe not a refrigerator, maybe not a range, but at least the sink so you can clean up and get some hot water and, and have a place where you're, where it's covered to prepare your food.
All right. If we can get a cost of both of that.
Both alternatives is what I was thinking.
Can we, if we, if we did that, basically it's a small room on the pad, can that have an extension of a cover from that to add tables underneath it as well?
As long as you stay on the elevated pad area, you're out of the floodplain. Once you start extending out beyond that and you get to, to the places where it kind of drops off and goes to the parking lot, for instance, that's then in the floodplain, and that triggers some other problems. So it's gonna save a bunch of costs and a bunch of time if we can just build on that pad, because the pad is now out of the floodplain. Right. My suggestion would be, we're already gonna have to postpone till spring sometime anyway. So in the meantime, we can work on.
Right.
A plan to put something on.
In its place.
In its place.
I think one approach on that is to find out just how much storage is needed by the sports teams and the Saturday market, so we actually know what we're.
Well, the sports teams already use the container. They have container down there already.
They already have containers. Of sports.
Right? Are, do your kids go to sports?
They did last year, but yeah.
But anyway, they have those large containers that, where they store all their, all their stuff. Excuse me.
And those are in the floodplain, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that happened, but it's, it's there now.
Should be containers, is that?
Yeah, but those are, those have been there for numerous, numerous years. Now, it's, I discussed it a lot with Carl, if it's pretty entailed, you move it down into floodplain, it gets kind of costly.
Yeah. So could we get a, a map of some arc with a division of where the same stars?
Sure, sure.
So that we, we see what we're watching about?
Yeah, good idea.
It's almost everything but that hunk. Yeah. No, I'm serious, it really is.
I mean, it would be great if we could sort of recycle that existing pad into a new, a new structure, I mean, that would be, it's there, let's use it.
That'd be practical.
You know, yeah, very practical, just, you know, a safer building, a, that's going to serve, serve our community's needs.
And in the alternative of, of, in Saturday market, using the Chamber of Commerce building for however long, there's storage there, I know, we've talked about that, so it wouldn't be an emergency thing we have to have it done for that issue if they have another place for that season to, to use, to we get our space built, shut out. Anything else?
I think I've got the marching orders.
Very good, okay. Sounds like more beans. It's a good flavor. The next item, the agenda, is the discussion of, or the agreement for janitorial services, and Larry will present that point.
Okay, this is in accordance with our 2020 budget adoption, and it was decided that instead of having a person on staff doing the janitorial work, that we would actually add that person's time that she spent on janitorial services with the needs, to fulfill the needs of the police department with more administrative work that needed to be done up there. And so it was decided that the city would contract out for the janitorial services, and the buildings that, that, that company would do the cleaning for would be, would include City Hall, Public Works Shop Building, the Waystart Chamber of Plan, the Fire Department, and Police Department. And we went out for requests for proposals and did receive one back, and we felt it was a reasonable price compared to what we had normally been charged in the past. We actually got a better deal, and so we would recommend that we authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for janitorial services with Crystal's Janitorial in the amount of $1,200 per month.
Thank you, Larry. We have a motion to that effect.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for janitorial service, services with Crystal's Janitorial in the amount of $1,200 a month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with, for janitorial services with Crystal's Janitorial in the amount of $1,200 a month. Any discussion or any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is an agreement for land, for land use planner, for the services of the land use planner. Larry will present this, and this will be a point.
Okay, again, as we were talking with the 2020 budget, one of the things we've been discussing during the course of those 2020 budget numbers has been how to replace the vacancy of the Public Works Director. And it's been recommended that the city divide these duties instead of replacing the Public Works Director. We had tried a couple of attempts at finding a good, best fit, long-term benefit, something that could save us money. We felt like none of those two interview, interview sessions, we did not find the right person to fill that, fill that spot. So we felt like it would be better to divide up the duties amongst the existing personnel, and so some of the duties that Carl was doing. And so some of the duties that Carl was doing, especially the field duties, meeting with customers, would be covered by the two supervisors. One supervisor supervises the Public Works Crew, and the other one oversees the water waste ruptures treatment systems. And then the other part was, the engineering part of his position would be covered by Pioneer Engineering and RH2 Engineering for the wastewater and water treatment facilities. And then the administrative work, I would do more of the administration work and oversee the Public Works Department in that respect. So we didn't, the idea was, at first, we were gonna look for somebody to try to help with the administrative duties, and we couldn't find that right person. So we decided to do it a little bit different, and then I would go ahead and take care of the administrative duties. And then we would have a land use person, land use planner person come in and, and work with me on all the land use planning things. And so one of the impending, one of the reasons we felt like this was appropriate was one of the impending deadlines of the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. So in our gen, Golden V S P code, we are required by the Department of Commerce to update our, our Critical Areas Ordinance, and the bids that I was receiving for that work by planning, companies that provide planning services were in the neighborhood of forty to forty-five thousand dollars. And so we decided that it would be better to have that done in-house, and we could do it a lot less expensively. So if for no other reason, I think this is a great idea, but we're also excited about the possibility of Justin working in a position of providing land use and, and planning services to the city. So we would like to present to you a contract for its approval and for Justin to provide land use planner services, and he would work about part-time, and we're gonna see how this goes for this year. And we believe that this is the best way for us to handle this, it meets our best fit and long-term benefits, and it saves money and meets that imposing deadline of the Critical Areas Ordinance. So of course it will come with a resignation, contingent upon his resignation from the council, but we feel like it, it could work very well. So we would like to recommend that the mayor be authorized to execute this contract with Justin Deely.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute professional services contract with Justin Deely in the amount of forty dollars per hour at an average of one hundred hours per month, not to exceed twelve hundred hours per year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute professional services, a professional service contract with Justin Deely in the amount of forty dollars per hour at an average of one hundred hours per month, not to exceed one thousand two hundred hours per year. Are there questions or discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agreement for professional services on airport improvements.
Okay, we've been working on this one for a while, and it's been about nine months since we actually went out and had an application for the capital budget program through the state of Washington administered by the Department of Commerce. Actually Dana's here tonight, Dana was instrumental in writing that grant application for the use of the monies of, from the capital budget, and so we appreciate that. The capital budget was for five hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we've talked about in recent meetings that that's gonna be used to operate a fuel system. So we've got a lot of, one of the key elements of starting this is to make sure that we get all of our environmental work done, our C P stuff done, and our arbiological work done in order for us, we have to get that done first in order to be put in a position to sign a contract with the Department of Commerce for the use of that capital budget numbers. So we have negotiated with Precision Engineering, Precision Engineering Approach, Precision Approach Engineering, gotta get that right, Precision Approach Engineering for, for these planning functions, environmental and permitting. They're gonna take us to the point where we can get under contract with Department of Commerce. And then once we finish the permitting part, then we can actually design the facility, get it ordered and constructed, get the pad constructed, get the tanks ordered and set up and installed. And so we've been working with Precision Approach Engineering on getting all this set up, and you've heard him speak before, I don't need to go through that again. But we believe this is a well-planned-out agreement, and would recommend that we move forward on this. We do have a deadline, we have to have the money spent by June of two, twenty twenty-one. But now is the right time to get moving on this, 'cause that'll come by pretty quick. So we would like to recommend that the mayor be authorized to execute this agreement for the preliminary design work and environmental planning and permitting, and to, in an amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Make that motion, stay the place there.
Second.
It's been motion, it is, it has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Precision Approach for planning, environmental, permitting, and preliminary design for airport improvements in the amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Before we go into the next item, a lot of times people say, well, what exactly are you gonna do at that airport? And this lays out the entire work order of what has to be done, and all the approvals and clearances that take time and money to get done. So if, if you need an answer for things like that on the airport, it's in this document. We'll be happy to share it with you, it's on our website anyway. That completes council business for tonight. The next item is resolutions, and the first item is a resolution on affordable housing and a memorandum of understanding with Clickatet County, and I'll present this particular We have three incorporated cities in Goldendale and Clickatet County, Goldendale, Benjin, and White Salmon. And there's a desire to, to take advantage of Substitute Bill number one four zero six, which allows for collection of a tax which will be credited against the state sales tax collected within Clickatet County and in three incorporated cities. By moving to Clickatet County, the max, by working with Clickatet County, the maximum amount of dollars what can be collected by the county for affordable and supportive housing. This, the mayor will provide additional information at the meeting, we'll figure out what that is. The cities of Benjin and White Salmon and Clickatet County have all approved a resolution and a memorandum of understanding, that's where we are right now. And what it is, this is not something new for Washington State. Remember when I heard it announced at one of our, Association of Washington Cities meetings? The, the state already collects this tax throughout the state. It's giving that tax back in portions to the cities of the, of the, of the state as a small token towards solving some of our housing, affordable housing issues. So that's, that's the purpose of it. It's not gonna cost Goldendale citizens or Clickatet County citizens additional funds. This is something that is already, that's something the state is collecting. So that's the standing for why this would be something acceptable as far as a, a tax that's not altogether a tax. It's not a great amount of money, but to have those funds consistently there to improve the situation with affordable housing would be beneficial to all three of those cities. So that's, that's what we're asking you to do is, is to accept this resolution that sets us up to turn it over to Clickatet County, they will collect the, the funds from the state on this, and then it'll be used for affordable housing among the three cities for the county. So it's, I think it'll be a benefit to our housing situation in all three of these cities, but it's not a big amount, but it will be helpful towards getting other funding and other support for affordable housing from other state agencies. And that's the main part of what I have to say about it. Is there any question or any discussion, anything I can provide?
How would, how would the money be used once collected? How's that discursed to, to go towards that?
It'll, it'll go, the county will collect it, 'cause they get more, they collect it than the three of us collect our little pieces. But that'll be used to work with different agencies that build affordable housing as a part of the, the match to get funding to build housing, affordable housing for people in this county. Some of it may end up in Goldendale, it may be in Benjin, it could be in White Salmon. Hopefully over the years it will be all three. There's a, a twenty-year collection time for this tax, so it goes on and on and on. But it will particularly facilitate opening other types of state funds for this type of purpose, for affordable housing. Any other? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution number seven zero five, authorizing a sales and use tax as a credit for affordable and supportive housing. I am moved to approve a memorandum of understanding with Clickatet County to implement a countywide process to leverage this money for the benefit of affordable and supportive housing.
Second one?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number seven zero five, authorizing a sales and use tax as a credit for affordable and supportive housing. Within this has been moved to approve a memorandum of understanding with Clickatet County to implement a countywide process to leverage this money for the benefit of affordable and supportive housing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda are resolutions, no, that's the one I just did, never mind. The next item on the agenda is ordinances, and the first is to add credit slash debit card option for paying water, water bills. Larry?
This adds six words to the option for payment of your water sewer bill or any other payment for that matter. In two thousand and five when this was passed, there was no provision for us to, to collect monies via credit or debit card. So now that the onus is upon the debit credit card companies, to make sure the funds are sufficient, we can now offer that as an option for payment and payments that we receive for water and sewer. So this has been kind of an oversight, we've been, we've been collecting with them and credit cards, but we just didn't make it official.
Right.
Just didn't make it official.
Find a solution for this problem?
I'll move to bring us to the times. So I'll move to adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-nine, which allows the use of credit or debit cards when the customer has, and also when customer has three insufficient return checks and waiving the second reading. Second.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number one four nine nine, which allows the use of credit or debit cards when the customer has three insufficient return checks, and we would be waiving the second reading. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Next item, Larry will present, and this has to do with the open period budget adjustment, it's something that's done every budget year.
In the open period, which is the period of time between the first of the month, January through the twenty-first of the month, in that same month, we have an opportunity to collect and receive all the billings and invoices that should be charged off to two thousand nineteen but actually don't, made it to our office until two thousand and eighteen. And there were some increasing, increases that we needed to cover in utility costs, excise taxes, and loan payments to Public Works Utility Vehicles in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that will cover us and keep us, keep us in a position where we have appropriated all the money that we, that we spent. And Connie and I have been working hard on trying to get all those numbers together, and this is the last piece of the budget appropriations we need for two thousand and nineteen. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate a motion to adopt this ordinance and waive this amendment.
I move to adopt ordinance number one five zero zero, being the two thousand nineteen open period budget amendment, waiving the second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number one five zero zero, being the two thousand nineteen open period budget amendment, waiving the second reading. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the report of officers, city administrator, and the mayor, I move again with Larry Galloway.
Okay, so just a few updates on the Public Works things going on, and most recently the Public Works Crew has been working on some adjustments at the main pump station, so if you go out that way, you probably see some activity, they're trying to adjust the pumps, to get them to work just right, and make sure that they're all synced like they're supposed to be, and they've had some, some warning line, warning calls come in, and they're tired of getting up late at night, so they're out there fixing it to get it so it works properly. We've also been in the shop a lot of the, a lot of the days, trying to make sure all of our equipment for snow plowing is in good working order and staying ready for the snow events. We're doing, we're doing okay so far. Then the other thing that you'll see a lot of probably is some work around the sewer line that's behind where the new Clickatet County Services Building is gonna go. We've been videotaping those lines through there, and we've determined that it would be in our best interest to go ahead and either pipe burst or replace those main lines before the, before the Clickatet County Services Building gets under construction. So we're gonna be working on those here over the next couple of weeks. We don't wanna start on the project too early, because we don't wanna get in front of the snow, we wanna be behind the snow. So we're preparing and making plans right now, working with Pioneer Engineering, Pioneer Surveying and Engineering to get a plan together to, to get that sewer line replaced and maintained. We're working on repairing road signs, they finished installation of the flooring in the police department, and then I've also been working with Andy on preparation of the Consumer Confidence Report, which is done every year about March or April. And that's a report about our water and sewer systems that is required by Department of Biology and Department of Health. Okay, as far as committees, our, our, the committee meetings that are coming up, we've actually talked, talked about trying to get this event committee meeting together, and we were gonna do it prior to this meeting, but we had an executive session, so I wanted to get that done first, so we've moved the event committee to, I can't remember now, but it's six or seven o'clock, so I'll make sure that I get a call in to you guys to make sure that at six o'clock or the seven o'clock one works.
She thinks it was seven.
She what?
I thought it was...
I said... I said seven.
Yeah. You had seven written down somewhere.
I know.
One day.
Six would be great, though.
Okay.
As an alternative time.
I'll try to make it six.
Not to speak for anyone else involved, but.
Anyway, we're going to have the Public Works Committee meeting, but we're going to have to move that one so that we can do the event committee, because we're getting behind the eight ball in the event committee. And then to help us with the fact that Roberto won't be in attendance at the next meeting. And Justin's not going to be here. And Andy would be the only one left. So, I asked Jane if she would fill in for the event committee meeting the night.
And I will.
She will.
I'll do it.
The two representatives from the council will be Andy and Jane for that particular meeting. So, I just want to make sure that's clear, because that's a standing committee. But we wanted to keep the 27th day going, moving forward. Do you have a question?
Event committee is when?
Okay, it's either, I'm going to try to make it six o'clock, but I need it on 27.
27.
And then on Tuesday and Wednesday of that week, Mylan and Mayor and myself will be in Olympia for the City Action Days Conference. And we do have a meeting set up from 6:00 to 7:30 with, it's a breakfast meeting at the Redline Hotel with Representative Mossbrucker and Representative Corey, as well as Senator King. So, we'll be able to have their undivided attention. If there's anything that you want us to, to take with us, we have our own legislative priorities, and I'm sure Mylan, you have a few things you'd like to share with them regarding to some of that kind of development issues that we've been talking about. But if there's anything else that you guys can think of that you want us to take with us, certainly have Connie, you can email Connie or myself and let us know if there's anything else you want us to talk to them about. We will have about an hour with them. And it's just, just us three and those three. So, it should be captivating, captivating audience, or captive audience, I guess.
Captive.
Maybe not captivating, but captive anyway. Okay. And then I got notes here about coming up with those estimates for the for the cover for the kitchen facility, and I'll get those to you as quickly as I can. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you very much. For now, here from our city council members, we'll begin with Jane.
It was a big meeting tonight. I, I don't really have anything to contribute other than I, I look forward to further discussions regarding the, the, the replacement of the Acomi Park building, and I'm optimistic that we can come up with something that is going to work for, for all stakeholders involved and our community at large. So, I look forward to being part of those further discussions.
Jane?
I think Jane covered it.
Thanks, Jane. That's why you went first. Phil?
I think Jane covered it, Phil.
There's just way too much credit.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Phil, well, mayor, actually, I would like to make a comment. I feel that it was a good decision for the council to have Justin in his new job. I think he will do a very good job. And I'm sorry that he has to step down, but then I think in the future, that's going to be a benefit to the council by his new job that he's taking on. So, I think it's very good.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? If not, the only thing I have, one of the council's thing to announce is I've completed the State of the City for 2019. I'm collecting a couple of little points on different statistics within the city, but it'll be put in your boxes for next meeting. And I figured it'll probably be put in the next few days, and it'll be on our city website. And I'll make sure Roger gets a direct call. Thank you. And with that, we go to public comment. Anyone here for a public comment tonight? Ken McEwen.
This is the main reason I came tonight. My name's Ken McEwen, 519 East Broadway Street. I had an incident this summer that, well, basically, it's caused me a lot of pain. I was out on my deck watering my, my garden, and the truck revved its engine as it was passing, and the decibels coming off of those dual pipes literally rattled my eardrum, and I think it ruptured it. And the reason I haven't said anything for five months is because I wanted to be perfectly sure that I was having problems
Oh, yeah.
with that concussion from, from that exhaust. And I can say honestly that, yes, I still am having problems. Now, I got to think, how about a mother down there at the parade with her brand-new babies and her grandkids or whoever? And this decibel, the decibels coming off of this exhaust does to those young kids what it did to me. I'm still in pain after five months. I mean, it literally rattled my brain. Now, why can't we have an ordinance against excessive decibels coming off exhaust? That are called, it's a nuisance to the public's health.
There's, there's health statistics on what, what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. But that's what we would provide for the
I'll tell you.
Committee to do that.
It hasn't been pleasant, and I don't appreciate it, and I don't know who, I was hoping Reggie would be here tonight, because I wanted to ask him. Isn't there, isn't there an ordinance against excessive decibel levels?
There's a current noise ordinance. I'm not sure what it says specifically, but there is a current.
Well, I'll tell you what. If it ever happens again to be, I'm going to call 911. We're going to get the guy's number, and we're going in front of the East District Court Judge, and they're going to find the guy. Or he's either going to get fined, or he's going to get his pipes fixed. You know? I wonder how many people actually don't even say anything.
Could be quite a few. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just wanted you to be aware that it's a danger to especially young children, you know? Think about it. If it rattled me, it's going to rattle them. And I'm going to be back. I want to talk to Reggie about it. I want to see what he has to say about it.
Good, good.
Okay.
And we're going to be looking to see what, what levels are permitted and not permitted.
Well, there shouldn't be a muffler. Leave that shop without being tested for its decibel levels. If it goes above a decibel level, then he shouldn't send it out of there.
I think probably the state has a, a level that's acceptable and not acceptable. So, we'll look into it.
It damaged me.
There is a law.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else for public comment? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So, move.
Very good. Appreciate all the hard work. This was a very productive meeting, and I appreciate all the input of our council, as well as the people attending here tonight. Meeting is closed.